Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the meeting to order. Roll call Ms. Burns, please.
Mr. Sullivan is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Hahnbach?
President.
Mr. Allen?
President.
Mrs. Burches?
Here.
Mrs. LaFerdy is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Sporny is absent with prior notice. And Mrs. Walbeazer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mr. Sporny might be still attending and just late, just as an FYI. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school, safety, and security. Any announcements, Mrs. Burns?
There are no announcements.
Superintendent's report, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Hahnbach. On March 27th, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit held their annual art gallery reception. Each year, our teachers across the county choose one student's artwork to represent their district at the event. Congratulations Carl Sandberg Middle School 5th grader Isaiah Leonard, who had his artwork titled "One of One," selected to represent Neshamity this year. The artwork will be on display at the intermediate unit office in Doylestown through December. Yesterday, a group of 48 Maple Point 8th graders accompanied the Bucks County Tour of Honor on their annual visit to the War Memorials in Washington, DC, despite the rain, the students had an inspiring afternoon, experiencing the changing of the guard at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington National Cemetery, and visiting the Marine Memorial. They prepared posters of support for the veterans and lined walkways at the War Memorial as the veterans entered and exited. After the tour returned to Ben Salem, the Maple Point Select Choir performed at the Veterans Dinner. Yesterday, Tuukka Elementary School started their recognition of Autism Acceptance Week by hosting Ben Hartramp, a well-known autism awareness speaker and educator who is autistic himself. Ben has spent the day visiting students in every grade, talking to them, answering their questions, and reading to them. And Ben has been through most of our schools in the last year, and he's been amazing. Get tremendous feedback from the kids. I get emails from parents about how much they appreciate and like Ben coming into our building, so we will continue to utilize Ben in that capacity across the district. A group of our Neshamity High School musicians enjoyed a four-day trip to Nashville a couple of weekends ago. They had the opportunity to visit some of the music attractions and museums there, and to perform at the Grand Old Opry, thanks to all of our teachers, our directors, and administrators who made the trip memorable for our students. And finally, this Thursday, we're looking forward to our annual STEAM Expo, which will be held at the high school from 6:30 to 8:30. The event includes dozens of hands-on activities, crafts, demonstrations, and exhibits featuring Neshamity teachers, students, educational and community groups, first responders, and more. This has become one of the biggest events of the year at Neshamity, which draws hundreds of students and their families from our elementary and our middle schools. Admission is free, and I encourage everybody to come out and experience for themselves the celebration of science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And that is all I have, Ms. Hahnbach. That's this Thursday, April 10th. All right. It's a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are we doing this now?
Yes. So, we have Deb Clayhold will provide a budget development presentation for the board, which will be livestreamed.
Okay, so we're going to review tonight the 25-26 budget development. This slide here, I'd like to point out that currently, in our preliminary budget, our anticipated revenue is $214,484,026, but our anticipated expenditures are $225,186,200. So, we're projecting a deficit of $10,702,174. The column C here shows that if we would raise taxes to the index, which is 4.7%, that would decrease the deficit to $3,997,930. When we did the 25-26 budget development, some of the major things that we took into consideration is, currently, we're not unlike other school districts, not only in Bucks County, but other counties, that we're experiencing a decrease in our tax base due to assessment appeals. We took into consideration projected salary increases. Our second look for our healthcare projections came in at 24%. Our increase in special education costs are on the rise. And our state subsidy is at the 24-25 level. We always have to have our budget done before we know what our subsidies are going to be from the state. And also, just to point out, ESER grant funds are no longer exist, so all of those COVID funds are gone. This is just a summary that you can see what our enrollment has been over the past eight years. So, we went from 2017, 9,225 students, to 2024, this is October 1st numbers of 2024, 9,788 students. This slide shows our total revenues. As you can see in the blue, that's our local revenues, which account for a majority of our revenues that we receive. It's about $155 million. Our state revenues are at $56, almost $57 million, and our federal revenues are at 2.4. Here's a revenue and variance summary, as it shows here. It shows what our actuals came in as, 23-24, that's in column A. And column B is our budget for the 24-25 year, and column C represents the 25-26. As you see, we're projecting 3.7, almost 3.8 million increase over the 24-25 budget. This slide just shows where the majority of the local revenues come from. Local taxes account for about $144 million. This includes all taxes. This is our ability to tax transfer taxes, delinquent taxes, our real estate tax base, our school taxes. Well, delinquent taxes are up here in the green, but mercantile taxes, per capita earned income tax, that's all in the blue area. Earnings are investments. They come in at 3.5 million. And we receive a pass-through federal funds. It's shown as local revenue because it comes from the IU. We get about 2.2 million, and all others account for $1.6 million. This slide summarizes again, like, local revenues and their variances, and these are the major categories. As you can see, the 6100 series down through, we're going to, all the 6100 series, those are all the local taxes that we assessed. Next slide is those same categories of local revenue, but it shows history year over year. So, column A, we have our 21-22 actual, column B is our 22-23 actuals, and so on. You can see 23-24 and C in our budget, and then in 24-25 in our proposed budget. Some of the things that you may notice is, like, transfer tax. Transfer tax, which is the 61-53 line item there, coming off a COVID year, we saw during COVID, not a lot of people sold their home. Coming off of COVID, we saw a large quantity of homes being sold. That's why you see that line item is coming in at 4.2 million. Typically, what we see is around, history shows it's around $2 million there, some of the bigger items. Interest is another one. Earnings on investment, as you can see, during coming off of COVID, interest was very low. We only earned $136,000 in interest. And you can see how that climbed to 23-24, our actual came in at like 4.4 million. We are projecting that interest rates will drop slightly. And interest rates drop as your fund balance drops also, because you don't have enough money, you know, not as much money as the previous year to invest. Here's a graph of state budgets. As I said before, our 25-26 budget is based on our actual, what we're receiving in 24-25. 19.2 million, basic ed. We get about 5.4 million from retirement. The retirement percent is 34% of salaries. We get half of that back from the state. Special education comes in about 7.8. The state property tax reduction, that's 5.4. What state property tax reduction is? The homestead-farmstead exclusion that individuals, taxpayers get on their tax bill. If you apply for homestead-farmstead, you will get that decrease in taxes. And further on, in this slide, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the homestead-farmstead later. But social security, we get half of our social security back. That comes in at 3.4 million. Our transportation, 1.6. And then a lot of miscellaneous items to add up to 3.8. Again, the same similar slides as shown before. Here is state revenue and variances. You can see what our budget was in 24-25 and what we're proposing. The proposed basic ed is at 19.2 million. That's what we're actually going to receive this year, though. Because we're always budgeting what we received the previous year. Because our budgets are always due to the state before the state actually closes their budget and gives us numbers. And the next slide, again, is similar to the local revenue. I'm showing state revenue history from the '22 year going forward to this year's budget and next year's proposed budget. Like I said, the big revenue items there are basic ed subsidy, special ed subsidy, and our retirement subsidy are the big items. This is our federal revenues. We get Title I, II, III, and IV. Also, we've received ESER grants in the past. The $600,000 that we're proposing in 25-26 is a little bit left over that we had until September to spend. Then, total is one, we're projecting 2.4 million this year. And here's just some history. So, you see in the 23-24, the ESER grants, we received a lot of money there. There was 4.7 million there. This slide just shows basic ed subsidy history. It goes back to 2013, and it shows what our basic ed subsidy is going to be for 24-25. So, you see, it's been pretty steady over the years. We've seen a slight uptick since '22. This slide is important to note because, in the blue, what you see there is our actual expenditures. And in the yellowish-orange color there, that's actually what the state subsidy is for reimbursement. So, you can see as the current years, how our special ed subsidy, I mean expenditures, have really been on the rise, but the subsidy that we get from the state is kind of leveled out. It doesn't increase much. We don't get much. So, and it's kind of hard to see those tiny numbers, but in 24-25, our expenditures are estimated 42.7 million, and we're only getting 7.8 million of that from the state. This slide shows our charter tuition rates. This is what we pay per student. Our regular education, our 24-25 rates are $15,173, and our special education per student is $39,205. In this slide, it shows some history of actual cost, what it's costing us for regular ed and special education tuition costs. So, in 23-24, our actual costs were about $2 million for regular ed and 1.9 million for special ed. We saw some change coming off of the '21-22 year, when we had a lot of students going to charter schools, but now some of those numbers are coming back in-house. This just shows historical transportation revenue. So, '25 year, '24-25 year, we're projecting about $10.9 million in transportation costs, but the state only reimburses us about $1.6 million of that cost. Here's a list of expenditures by category. We show actual costs from '23-24, budgeted 24-25, and our projected budget for '25-26 and those variances. Now, the large variances that you see are in the benefits. We see it going from a budget in '24-25 of $17.2 million, and we're going to 20, about 20.9 million. That's due to the increase in our benefits, our medical and prescription of about 24%. Our actuaries are predicting that is to be at 24. If you move down to the professional and technical services, it's another large increase there, about $3.6 million, and the 500-line category of 20.2 million. Now, and that's like 4.9 million increase. So, those increases in those two categories, the 500 and the 300 series, comes from our special ed, where we're seeing large increases. So, one out of five students have a disability. From '21-22 year to our current year now, we've seen an increase of 186 students. So, we went from 1,908 in '22, we now have 2,094. Our early intervention numbers are on the rise. In '21-22, we had 83. In '24-25, we now have 160. That number has almost doubled in the last four years. So, with the increase of complex students and our ability to staff those positions, it requires us to utilize our IU services. So, right now, if we look at, if we can't staff them here, we rely on the IU. So, in '23, we had a class, our AS class of eight students, their tuition was $90,000 per student. In '24, those same eight students, our tuition was $95,000 per student. So, in 2025, we are going to, we anticipate needing three autistic support Level 3K classes. So, we're budgeting now for 24 students. So, we're going from eight students, 24 students now at $98,000 per student. So, the Level 5 increases, they increase because we have complex students, and we have to outsource because we don't have the ability to take care of their needs in-house. So, there's a lot of outsourcing of tuition cost. So, that's where you see those huge numbers. They've all increased over time in all the different categories, so you can just, there's this, you know, like deaf and blindness, we went from, in '22-23, from 15, now we're up to 31. So, we see a lot of these numbers doubling or increasing greatly. So, the total transition of the count is there's 117 back in '22-23, and now we have 150 that we're estimating. This shows our general fund balance as of 24-25. In the different categories, we have non-spendable. Those are like expenditures that need to be prepaid before the beginning of the year, so we have to put them in a non-spendable category. We have committed to capital $10 million, committed to piecers of $10 million. And those committed and assigned categories, board can make a decision to rearrange those categories. This is the fund balance in dollars, so you can see over time how it slightly increased in 19-20, and now we see it decreasing. So, in '23-24, we see a huge decrease. The reason for the huge decrease from '23 to '24 is the board made a decision to transfer $6 million to an internal service fund for our benefits, and another $12 million was transferred to our capital fund. This slide shows the fund balance as a percent of revenue. When you go out for bond issues, you need to have Moody's, like Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's. They will rate you. One of the things that they rate you on, you know, you may have a AAA rating, AA, AA-, there's these different categories, and that decides what interest rates you get. Like, if the interest rates are around 2%, you may get better deal because you're rated a higher rating with Moody's. So, it'll help you with those costs. And they always go to look at fund balance, like what percent of revenue. So, this is something to keep an eye on, because you wouldn't want this number to drop too much further below, like 14%. You usually want to stay within 15% to 20% of fund balance. This slide here just shows if we would raise taxes to the index of 4.7, what does that mean to the average homeowner? Based on an average assessed home value of $27,600, a taxpayer would, tax owner, homeowner would pay $236 more. I want to get back to what I was talking about, homestead-farmstead. We haven't gotten the numbers yet for homestead-farmstead. We're about $5 million. If I looked at a previous slide, remember, I talked about that $5 million. PASBO is projecting that the state is going to come out with large numbers there. They've estimated that we should see about a $2 million increase. So, what that does is, we get the revenue, we get like, so if we're projecting like maybe $7 million rather than the $5 million from the state, we get it, but we have to turn around and give it back to our taxpayers. So, that goes back if you applied for homestead-farmstead. So, that's really going to reduce the amount of the increase of the 4.7. So, it's always important for homeowners to apply for that homestead-farmstead exclusion. Letters go out every year for that. So, that $236 may be reduced. You take $2 million, and we probably have about 16,000 more properties for homesteads. So, that could reduce that in half. But we should have those numbers. The state's supposed to post those numbers by April 15th. This schedule, I know it's very tiny to see, but the reason for this schedule is, if you look at, I'm always looking at the current assessed values, so I monitor this to see if any new properties were assessed. In this, current assessment of $814,481, no, sorry, $814,481, in that number, we have included about $8 million more because we feel there are some large properties that aren't assessed yet that will be assessed. So, we're picking up some, we're projecting to pick up some additional assessed value there. We have some, three different warehouses in our district, plus an apartment building that we are anticipating some large revenue dollars for. So, this is just how we calculate the revenue. So, without a tax increase, you can see the homestead coming out of there at 5.4 million, and then our tax revenue, and then we take what percent we think we're going to collect, because a percentage of those will go delinquent. But the interesting thing about this slide, it just shows you, with the index of 4.7, it generates $6.7 million in revenue. But I wanted to show this at like 4.6% also, so you can see the difference. So, for every .1 of a mil, that gives us about 142,500 worth of tax revenue. And that's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Deb. Does anybody else have any questions for Deb while she's up there?
Hi, yes, I just have a question, not due to any content. Plaster on here is draft, over and over. Is this draft, or is there a reason it's draft, that it says draft on us?
It's a draft because it's not a final budget. It doesn't become, and it's preliminary, too, because we will continually work on it. I continually look at revenues. I continually look at the revenues and assess values to see if any more properties are coming in, new properties. I get reports on that each month, so I'll look at that. I kind of look at trends. So, like, when you're forecasting transfer taxes, or mercantile taxes, business taxes, I look at the trends. So, they haven't been really good this, so far, but, you know, if I think they're coming in a little higher this year, towards the last couple of months, then I'll increase those.
Understood. So, draft may mean the best as you know right now?
As of right now.
Thank you.
Deb, you said a lot of, you're looking at revenue constantly, but we are, as a district, continue to look at expenditures as well, where to reduce things from, correct? Thank you.
Yes, we do. We will constantly look at any new retirements that we get in, because that's a big difference. Normally, when someone retires, they're at the top end of the pay scale. And then, when we hire somebody new, it's usually, you know, maybe out of college or with a couple of years of experience. So, there's usually a big difference in salaries, and piecers, and FICA and Medicare on those wages. So, that will reduce the salary number.
As far as medical insurance goes, we have the prediction of 24%. Are we shopping around outside of our normal providers and looking into different options, like the consortium and things like that, so we can get the best rate and best benefits possible?
So, yes. So, I looked at joining CPAS, and it really isn't a good time. It doesn't really get you a lot. We are large enough to be on our own. What a consortium helps you with is possibly your administration cost. But then again, there's some things that the consortium doesn't do that our current third-party administrator does do for us. For instance, they do our 1095Cs at the end of the year. They do all of our open enrollment. So, in looking at it, like, our insurance is through IBX, and we have a summary plan description. So, self-insured, our claims are our claims. So, if we go in a consortium, our claims are still going to be our claims. So if we go in a consortium, our claims are still going to be our claims. Like our administration fee is around 400,000. So you're not going to get that much difference there. Okay? So a way to, and it's unfortunate, like when we look at all the numbers, we're looking at, we have about over 2,200 members. 38, 37 members out of 2,200 represent 33% of our total claims. So we just have some high claimants with some medical issues that it's just, it's spiking. And we we're not seeing, like normally when a drug's on a market for a while, you see the costs come down. We're not seeing the costs staying steady. We're seeing those costs rise. So like the only way to get around like the medical of lowering it is changing your summary plan description. And what that means is, okay, so maybe we, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, but just for example, we may allow someone to go to a chiropractor 30 visits a year. Well, maybe we change it to 20. Now, what's that going to get you? Is it going to really get you that much money to to lower your cost? Our prescriptions are pretty standard of whatever, what you have to provide. There's nothing out of the ordinary that we're providing that other insurance doesn't provide. So we're not, you know, like doing weight loss medicines or any of those high numbers that are. Okay? Thanks, Deb. You're welcome.
Thank you again. Ms. Burns, is there anybody signed up for public comment?
There were no signups.
Thank you. We have no action items tonight. I can't believe it. We haven't had that in a long time. So let me just go over the items currently for approval at the next public board meeting, which is April 22nd. We have 2.01 Routine Business Matters, 2.02, the Revised 2024 through 2025 School Calendar, and the 2.03, the 2025 Summer Programs. I'm sure we will be adding to the agenda as we go forward, but these are the three things that are listed there right now. And I am up next for the committee reports, Business Operations. The last Business Operations meeting we had was last week. And we went over the presentation, a lot of it that was just gone over to the public. So if anybody has any questions or wants to come out and speak more in depth about the presentation that we just gave, our next Business Operations meeting is April 30th, 6:30 in this room. Mr. Rodriguez, Education?
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck. Our next Educational Development Committee will be Tuesday, May 6th at 6:30 in this room.
Mr. Allen, Facilities and Planning. I know we merged that into Business Operations, but I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add about what we discussed.
I just want to, could comment on the Schrader report that we talked about. During a business, the combined meeting of the Business Out and Facility and Planning, we received a report from the Schrader Group. They, the idea of that was to give us some kind of a, an idea of our facility usage to help us see where we are at this point in time after our constructions, our renovations, and our realignment of the district. And their projection and suggestions of where we need to go, where our facilities, you know, what our needs are going to be regarding our facilities so that we can make, you know, plan ahead. So that's where we're at with that. We're still digesting that information and I'm sure more will come out of that. And that's all I wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Rodriguez, if you could give the policy report for Mrs. Lafferty, please?
Yes, thank you again, Mrs. Hollenbeck. Policy Committee will be Tuesday, May 15th at 6:30 in this room. And just like with the Educational Development Committee, anyone that does have anything that they want to bring to the committee is a good time to come and a good time to discuss with your fellow board members.
Thank you. Representative reports, Mrs. Walbees or the IU Board?
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. I'm not sure who has the NEF.
Okay, so Board and Shamney Education Foundation held their Harlem Wizards fundraiser on Saturday, March 15th. Over 1,000 fans filled the stands in Gym 3 to see the Shamney Dream Team of 18 Shamney staff, which was 18 of Shamney staff members coached by Court Creek Physical Education teacher Brooke Lesser. Take on the Wizards. A great time was had by all and the event raised over $18,000 for the foundation. Thank you to all those who attended and the sponsors for their support of this game and the NEF. The next meeting of the NEF Board will be held here at Maple Point on Monday, April 14th at 4:00 p.m. The Board will be considering the 2025 NEF scholarships applications at this meeting along with other business. Members of the community are invited to attend and participate.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. PSBA Liaison, Ms. Marshall?
Thank you. No report at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Technical School?
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. Sad to report that Mr. Rodriguez and I were not able to attend the Tech Board Dinner. I understand Mr. Bowman was able to go. You may want to comment on that. But the Board met after the dinner, March 27th. But I did get some notes off of that. I talked with our superintendent over there. Some upcoming events that were of note, April 2nd and 4th. Well, they're not upcoming anymore. 2nd and 4th, the Skills USA State Conference was held in Hershey. A number of our students did very well there. I'm hoping to get some results to report at a later date how they did. Actually, April 8th and 9th, right, going on right now, the NOCTI testing is occurring over to Tech School. April 15th, there will be a College and Career Fair and our ever-popular car show will be on April 26th. I see a number of action items that were on the agenda of note that I'll just comment on. The Board accepted a PDE grant, 400,000. That's for supplemental equipment. I believe that's earmarked for welding. I think there was some talk about upgrading a paint booth over there as well. There's paint booth over there that actually came from the original wing of the of the Tech School and it was moved over when it was renovated. So that means it went back to my father's time teaching there, which really is. So equipment is well, well-needed and and these these grants are put to good use. I see there was a donation to the dental program, which I found interesting, of a matigan. So our our students over there can practice giving x-rays. Apparently, Dan and I allowed to sap each other with x-rays, so a matigan fills in nicely. I can report the Budget Committee. We held a meeting last week. We, I think we have preliminary budget off, I believe it was sent to the business managers of all the districts to review and comment. And that's all. I'm sorry, I did not.
And I will add to that, since Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Allen missed that dinner, the dinner is an absolutely incredible event. It's pretty cool to, it it really is like a five-star dinner that our our students put together. And I am happy to report that I ate enough for the three of us. So it was not a problem that you missed.
Thank you, Mr. Allen and Mr. Bowman. Brings us to the closing of the meeting. Any public comment from anybody out in the audience? Anybody?
Did you want to speak? Afterwards?
That'd be in person.
That's fine. Yep, okay.
Thank you. Does anybody have any future topics? Any board comment? Okay, our next future meetings, our next public board meeting is Tuesday, April 22nd at this, in this room at 7:00 p.m. And then, of course, we have our public work session, May 13th at 7:00 p.m. And our public board meeting on the 27th of May. As was previously already discussed, our Business Operations Committee meeting is Wednesday, April 30th in this room at 6:30. Educational Development is Tuesday, May 6th at 6:30 in this room. And Tuesday, May 15th is the Policy Committee. Does anybody else have anything? With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second by Aaron. Everybody, have a good night. Thank.